If I knew your friend coming to his office today.
I actually.
I thought you were gonna say, "I actually tasted it."
I think you would've seen my fingerprint on one of them.
Would you?
Listen, you don't play when you order food either. We're gonna go live with him bad, he don't play.
Are you licking all the pieces?
No, I wasn't.
That won't, that won't bother me.
No, doesn't stop me either.
As long as you don't have me in the chat when we get ready, we're good.
Yeah.
Right.
You told me something about that, pizza's yours now, bud.
Um, can you guys get this to Joan, please?
Okay. Oh, is that where that's from?
Stacy, what? Yours. Here's another one thing.
This is, uh, uh, Billings. And it's just, I'm just, uh, in discussion.
I have a turtle.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
My favorite is, uh...
Thank you, Brian.
No, that's from period.
There was, she said there was.
And if you'd like, I'd like to be. This is only show signatures on building sites.
Um...
I gotta let us probably one day.
He said, "He can."
No.
He said, "Give me all signs." He's not gonna let that one be seen.
While the meeting is ordered, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Good to see so many folks here. Um, beginning our meeting, we have awards, recognitions, and celebrations from our superintendents. Stan?
We had a busy week last week. Our middle school choir had two concerts, and they, uh, were well attended. Uh, band is, uh, actually having a concert this week, and, and in two weeks, um, our fall musical, Hairspray, opens up at the high school, so, um, they're building the sets now and lots of activity going on out there, so we're kind of getting excited for that fall show season.
That's it, that's it. Good, sounds good. All right, before you, you have a consent agenda. Need a motion to approve.
Support.
Stacy and Mike, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, back to you, going for the superintendent report.
So I have a few things to share with you. This is a, um, I'm working on a communication to the staff, and one of the things that happens, and we've talked about this a couple times, is just the sheer number of things that schools and teachers are faced with doing. And, um, I talk a lot with the staff about really refocusing on a few things at a time, and, uh, I think this is a really good quote. It just says, "People think focus means saying yes to the thing you've got to focus on, but that's not what it means at all. It actually means saying no to the hundred of other good ideas that there are. You have to pick carefully." And I think that's one of the things that has plagued, uh, school districts, is that there are a lot of good things that sound really great, but you can't do them all and do them all well. And so, we are really intensely focused on, on the things that are correct, and we're trying to pick the right things, and, uh, that's a constant battle, 'cause there's a lot of things that creep in on that. So, um, just something that I thought I'd share, um, sending that out to the staff this next week, and thought it would be worth, uh, bringing to your attention. Um, excited that on November 20th, we have, uh, Christmas in the Creek, which is kicking off here in Swords Creek. Um, there's gonna be a tree lighting ceremony at 6:00 PM, uh, on the corner of Millen and How- Miller and Holland Roads. Um, at that time, uh, they're gonna be kind of setting up for, uh, the next day, where there's actually, or, sorry, not the next day, a few weeks later, uh, Saturday, December 2nd, there'll be, uh, quite a day of events for Christmas in the Creek, um, that will culminate with the fire department and the firefighters' association having the Santa Parade, uh, through downtown. So, uh, flyers are going out, uh, with elementary schools and, and, uh, middle school students, and, and we hope that, um, we get a lot of support for that. Um, also wanted to let you know that, uh, we are putting these flyers out, we have ordered these flyers. Uh, we have a substitute shortage in Swords Creek, um, and actually across the state of Michigan, um, and so we're doing everything we can to try and encourage people, um, to come and sign up to sub, and so these flyers are going out. We have the, uh, group coming out to Hairspray to start looking at trying, not just for teacher subs, but parapros, office aides, food service, we're looking for substitutes, um, for any and all positions. So that's something that's going out, uh, to home with kids, but also out in our community contact list, so, um, trying to get as many people to the word that we're trying to recruit as many substitutes as possible. Um, I'd also like to just report that tomorrow night at 6:15 PM, I'll be doing a presentation over at the PAC. Um, I'll be talking about, uh, grading and reporting, and how we do that here in Swords Creek, and how that, uh, will be looking as we kind of move forward and looking at the research that supports that. So, um, it's supposed to be pretty hands-on, I'm gonna try and make it very practical and user-friendly for parents. I'm gonna roll out the report card for the middle school for the first time that they'll see, uh, which would, which will hopefully shed quite a bit of light on that, so I'm excited to, uh, to, uh, to do that tomorrow night at 6:15 at the PAC. Anyone, any one of you are welcome to go, of course. And, um, we have two brief reports tonight that we wanted to bring to you, just to kind of keep, uh, you in the loop of some happenings going, going-ons around the district. Rod, are we gonna start with the CDC, or how are we gonna do this?
We're gonna start with Adrian, and then talk about the SHAPE grant.
Okay, so, um, Adrian Trapatowsky's here, she's, uh, one of our teachers at the high school, and she's gonna be talking about a grant that she's involved with for the Society of Health and Physical Educators, and, uh, go ahead and take it away.
Excellent. My lovely assistant.
Bella.
Yeah. Um, just to give you a little background, I, uh, just recently finished my master's degree in administration, and as part of, uh, that degree, I had to do an internship. So, last year at the high school, I, uh, Ms. Calwell was actually my mentor, um, and she really encouraged me to, uh, kind of step out of my comfort zone and, and do something that I hadn't done before, and that was, uh, writing a grant. I had no grant-writing experience, it met, uh, one of the ELCC standard, ELLC standards, um, that I had to do, so, uh, I chose to, well, we decided that what we really should do is, is make a community focus with my grant. Um, so, I chose to write a grant, uh, to the Society of Health and Physical Educators, uh, to ask for money for pickleball equipment, um, because we have such a big pickleball community, uh, here in Swords Creek. The Cage, for those of you guys that don't know, is, uh, the largest indoor, open membership facility in the state of Michigan. Um, so they have, uh, up to 125 members that are in and out of there, um, and they, uh, had come a couple years ago and, and did a little lesson with my high school kids, but I thought, what an awesome opportunity to get some new equipment in, uh, in our gym, um, and then actually plan a field trip to go up there. So, that's me, I'm receiving my award, there's a, another slide, slide there that, um, as part of my internship, as Calwell encouraged me to write a grant, um, connect community and the school, SHAPE actually gave us a thousand dollars to purchase new equipment. Uh, I have, uh, equipment ordered as of today, um, and we're hoping to turn it into a, a field trip, take our, our high school kids, teach them the game at the high school, and then take our, our high school kids up there and actually let them play with some of the seniors that are, that are up there, uh, playing Monday through Thursday. So, um, it was actually a really neat, uh, opportunity, there's me and the president of SHAPE, and then, uh, a great source of pride for, for my college, I graduated from Western, and those were all, uh, Western students there that won awards too, so it was kind of cool to reconnect with my department chair and, um, you know, get our name out there too. That was it.
Great, thank you very much.
Any questions for Adrian? Thank you, Adrian, appreciate it very much.
All right, well, Rod's getting, all of yous are getting that up. Uh, I know all of you, but I'm your new director of child and community development, and, uh, I just, I'm so excited to be at the CDC, and, uh, Community Ed, and, you know, really what I wanted to show you just was all the, the great staff and the students that we have there. Should be on the first half.
There you go, lots to open up here, so, because everyone's in the back. You can just, you can just probably go through on that, on that one middle. Yeah, he's funny, he does. Yeah, the power of my expertise, you can do that.
You can download it. There you go.
Tony and I'd like to go to Lowe's shopping here, Rod, right in the middle of the dock.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm gonna make you sign back in there.
Oh, alright.
That's, that's, let's see, one, two, three, that's Rod's fourth used, uh... Fourth most-used thing there.
Perfect. So, could you find, go to the next one? Uh, so, the Child Development Center, I know, uh, a lot of you know, uh, many of these things, but we have three different locations. Mary Creepo, obviously, is our main center, and we have satellite centers at Gaines Elementary and The Cage. And so, uh, at Mary Creepo, we have, let me go in, um, we have, uh, one of our programs is the Infant Toddler Room, and Infant Toddler Room, we have 20 kids, uh, in that particular program right now, and these are obviously some of the cute kids that we have there, uh, but they're from birth to two and a half in that program.
Interesting.
Uh, Treasure Chest is the next part of our daycare, so once somebody or child becomes older than two and a half, they transfer over to our Treasure Chest, and so, uh, here, you can start to see that we, uh, begin to incorporate the High School Curriculum in this program. So these kids are two and a half to school age, uh, and this is a tuition-based, uh, program. We have about thirty, uh, thirty-nine kids in that program. Now, our pre-K and GSRP programs, now those are, are both really the same thing, the only difference is, pre-K is a tuition-based, and we have 37 kids in that program, where GSRP is the grant-funded program, we have seventy-three kids, uh, in that program. And you can see here, uh, with the High School Curriculum that they focus on right here, High School is really, um, learning through play and learning through discovery, so you see the little guy in the center, um, that's a, a great picture, because right, what he's doing right there is they have this thing, besides all the projects, uh, and focus on literacy, they really focus on, uh, the kids, you know, planning what they're going to do, then going to do it, and then reporting back. So right here, he's actually telling the teacher what, um, he's going to do, what area he's gonna go play in, whether it's the writing area, or the book area, or the block area, toy area, or house area, and then, when they go play, after that period of time, they come back as a group and they talk about what they learned and what they liked best, and so on, but you can move to the next one, there's just some more pictures here, you know, like the sensory tables, where they might be, uh, you know, playing in water, uh, with some, whatever, uh, whatever they put in there for that particular, uh, activity, uh, as well as, um, we have kids that come over from the high school to work with the kids, and also, part of the high school curriculum, they're, um, they have family-style lunches, so if ever you want to come have lunch with the kids, you know, come on over, it's about, I think they eat lunch around, uh, noon, but they actually all go ahead and, uh, eat and get served family-style, and that's how they have their meal, so that they can also learn the social cues and interaction. Extended Day is, uh, another program we have, when, uh, you can call it Extended Day, you can call it Wraparound Care, you can all latchkey, doesn't matter what you call it. Basically, we have kids that come, uh, starting at 5:30 in the morning, and they're all elementary-age kids, and maybe their parents need to drop them off before they go to elementary school. So we have about 110 kids in this program, who either come really early and we go ahead and bus them to their elementary schools, or after school, they'll get bused from their elementary schools to us, and, um, that program ends about 6:30, so when parents can come, think of mine. Okay? So, Community Education is another part of, uh, another program that falls under my, uh, umbrella there, and with Community Ed, we have a few different things. Our new Creecwear is, we've, we've kind of took a new model to Creecwear this year. Instead of buying $7,000 worth of shirts and apparel and trying to sell them all in one day, which is homecoming, we actually are now part, we, we're not doing that, we're partnering with, uh, local company, A&amp;N Designs, or Graphic Designs, it's just right down to the smoothie shop on Miller Road. So what they're doing is they're actually keeping all the stock for us, so we don't have to keep stock, uh, in-house, our stores at the occasion. I'm partnering with Ben Gillette's class at the high school and some high school kids, putting together all these new designs. They've already run, uh, a video on their ITC announcements, and so we're getting, uh, some new designs out, and I really like these that, uh, the kids and I designed, 'cause if you notice, right on the sweatshirts and on the back of the t-shirts, where kind of our little thing is putting up the dragon eye, uh, as a little trademark of, of, uh, the Creecwear that we're doing. So, uh, if you want any designs, all these designs are at The Cage right now. And, uh, we, we, we did go ahead and have a, uh, online tribe model that I tried to put together, but unfortunately, that turnaround was like more than four to six weeks going through the, uh, online, uh, store that we had. Here, A&amp;N and right, working with somebody locally, we can get a turnaround in two days. So, much better. And, part of Community Ed too, if you want to go to the next slide, uh, please, uh, Community Ed, what, uh, I wanted to do is create a bridge, really, between our community and our school district, and Ben and I have talked a lot about that, where that's kind of been missing. And so, what, uh, I did is kind of jumped on what, uh, Ben was doing, and I created a mission, a community mission board, and basically, it's an opportunity for, uh, groups and organizations in the community and their representatives to come to The Cage and meet with representatives from the schools, all get at the same table and talk about how we can support each other. Instead of the school district always saying, you know, "We need help, we need help," it's our way of saying, "Hey, how can we help our community as well?" So we meet the first Tuesday of every month, which is tomorrow, so you're more than welcome to come tomorrow, it's The Cage at 1 o'clock, and participate. Could you go back to the one earlier? Because some of the things that we're actually doing is, uh, we're doing a disacquired backpack program for all of our elementary kids. We had backpack programs just for Deacon El- and Elms, but we've got needy kids in every school. So, um, November, actually, is our first month where we're gonna have a backpack program for, at every, um, elementary school building, and now. And also, just like the high school is doing the Threads program, we actually have a Threads room at The Cage now for all of the district. So if you're not familiar with that, uh, this, these are just some pictures of all the clothes that we have at The Cage for, at The Cage, for, uh, school-aged kids, and a perfect example is yesterday, uh, we had a student and his grandma come through this room, and they took everything that they needed. Basically, the grandma had this child kind of come into her house in the last week, unexpected, and into our district, and the grandma came to the principal, and the principal kind of noticed what was going on, and she was worried, 'cause she had no clothes for, uh, her grandson. And so the principal, knowing what we were doing, said, called us up and said, "Hey, we've got this family in need in our, in our district." So we brought them in yesterday, and, you know, anonymous came in, they went in that room and got jeans, shirts, and whatever else they needed, and just could take.
Dave, do all the principals and, and teachers, are they all aware of this, Ed?
All the principals and the counselors know. I haven't sent something out to all the teachers, which is part of what we were doing, um, but yeah, I talked to them all, because, uh, just like the backpack program, we want the principals and the counselors to, to look for those needy students and know the process to go through to get them home. And if we have, uh, for example, if we had a, a family who might have had their house burned down, which actually has happened recently, we can not only help with the school kids, but we're partnering with the Udius Methodist Church and their programs, their food and clothing programs, to where they can help, uh, get resources for the adults as well. And, one more. And here's pickleball, so, it's very, I, I, I cue, there's, uh, um, just some of the activities that we do, and we do a lot of different activities, uh, not just pickleball, but we also have, uh, Tai Chi, we have swimming, uh, open swim, all that, uh, which is at the middle school. Uh, but The Cage, uh, will definitely be utilized for a lot more than just pickleball, uh, in the future. One of the things that, uh, hopefully we'll notice very soon here is, uh, we just, uh, I just went down to Brighton, uh, and met with, uh, uh, one of their district finance officers to look at their, uh, brochure, and so you're gonna see some improvements in the brochure that we send out to the community as well. Not just in the way of how we format it and what we're doing, but also including the senior center and having a lot more community involvement in that brochure, so that together we're putting something out, knowing that, or letting everybody know in the community that there's a, a great partnership and, and it's more of a community brochure, not just an us brochure. And, uh, last year, I didn't know if you guys actually saw this one, Jason Hanson, did you guys know Jason Hanson came to The Cage last year? I did not know that.
No.
So there's, uh, my GSRP class at, uh, The Cage, uh, and our great staff there, and so, uh, he came out and he was doing something, I forget, uh, it was something with health and nutrition, with milk, uh, some type of milk campaign at The Cage, and so he was nice enough to, uh, meet all of our GSRP kids, uh, there. And, and the last one is just me being so proud of my... I had to put that in there, my new place, my new home.
I love it.
You know, because, uh, I'm so, I'm so grateful that I'm there, and, uh, we have an awesome staff and, and kids, and I really, I really encourage you to come. Uh, I know Stacy comes quite often, which is incredible, um, but I really encourage everybody to come, because being around those kids is just amazing, and, I mean, hugs all the time, getting on the ground.
You even can fold them and put them to sleep.
Would you say it's safe to say that your response you get from the children is different than your previous location?
It's a little bit different. If you have any questions, you go ahead and answer them.
So Dave, how do you get the word out about your amazing, uh, food efforts and, uh, pantry or the closet for the clothing?
Um, one of the things we've really focused on is just working with the principals and the counselors to identify, uh, kids.
But to, to like, folks in the community, so that they, they know that it's there, so that they can contribute?
The community mission board is exactly what we're doing. So we have, uh, we have a lot of, uh, all the churches in the community are part of this board, and so, uh, through that, we're actually going to get a lot of volunteers to help us on a weekly basis, put those backpacks together. And so, just like, um, they're already where, just the partnership with, uh, Udius Methodist Church and all the other churches, you know, if they need anything, they can, they can just call me.
I, I don't have a question, I just have two great comments, but just that it is, I encourage everybody to come over there, 'cause it's great. So, you were given a bunch of stuff, and a whole different rem of what you did before, so you're doing so great. You really are, and, and just, you know, you're, you just punch along and get it done, and, and it, it really is great, and, and when you go in CDC, I have to say, not just 'cause I love them, 'cause they're sitting there, but the staff is just happy, kind, nice, you would never feel like they didn't want you there, um, it's just a whole different world in there, I love it, they're doing great.
And I have to point out, so, Jen, Richards, uh, my secretary, and Heidi, one of our lead teachers in our toddler and infant room, they are incredible, and May as well, she's also in the front office.
Yes, May is great, they're just happy and...
I know, and so, I couldn't do half of this without them, I mean, they are, are truly incredible, so I'm really proud to be part of, of their staff.
And, and it is fun to go in there, and obviously, I go 'cause of my little Cooper, but, um, just, I mean, they, I was able to put a little baby to sleep, you know, that they were, was crying, or they, they just love you in the rooms, it's just fun, it's, it's fun to be able to go in and see them and have lunch with them, and, you know what I mean, it's, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, you know, it's...
It really is, so thank you for all you're doing.
Yeah, so if you ever want to come over, then...
Yes, yeah.
We had mentioned, I think it was back in the winter, that, um, we're gonna open the school back up, middle school or high school, for senior walking.
Okay.
Have we done that, or?
Have we done that yet? No, we have, we have met, we've gone out to the senior center, and we've met with the director there and the associate director, Dave and I have been out there, and, uh, not only do we want to open that possibility up, but we'd also like to talk about them having possible access to, you know, our, our new weight facility, and so I think it's just a matter of working out the logistics, and so that's something that Dave will be able to work on soon.
Yeah, Nikki, uh, who's working on our brochure, she's already called the senior center and gotten their information to find out all the classes they have going on, so that's gonna be part of our brochure. So, I think as we move along, we're definitely gonna see more of a partnership between the community and the district, especially, uh, with that brochure and all of the things that we offer.
Dave, a couple of quick things, and the one I mentioned last is gonna be the most, the most important, but, um, I think your threads and your backpacks are wonderful, I think that, that's excellent, 'cause there's a lot of people that won't ask, and, you know, sometimes that's best to be kept a secret squirrel and get people in and out, that's excellent. Something else, uh, Community Ed, the last few years, is run about, about 70 grand in the red each year, and I don't expect you to be a miracle worker and make it run in the black, but, since I've been on the board, some of the things I've said to the past people who's run that facility is, why and what are you still doing for it to still run in the red? We know pickleball can't possibly run in the red, and I want to see the pool stay open, even if it does run in the red, 'cause I think that's important for the community, for the kids that want to learn how to swim. I would hope that the other thing is, though, you take a minute and really examine of what is the need versus what is the cost, and the last rumor mill from some of the kindergarten teachers over the last two years, um, and I never brought it up, because I knew it wasn't gonna change, but I'll bring it up now, because between you and Ben, we have two different people running the rodeo, um, a lot of kindergarten teachers, because of that, uh, the, the new curriculum over there, have found that the, the kids are coming in, um, I guess you'd say more wanting to play and, and very poor behaved, um, than beforehand. So, i- if that's something that you guys could work out and maybe survey the kindergarten teachers, did I just talk to two or three that were complaining, or is it something that is real? Because that, that's, that's been brought up, like, like the last two years.
Well, I get, I'll talk about both things, uh, the last couple things. One, um, I think you can see a different kind of view we're taking on Creecwear. We're not just gonna go spend a bunch of money and have, have a bunch of stock just sitting over there, and, "I love glitter." Well, let's just say that. I don't love glitter as much as I... So you didn't see any glitter there. But, there's still a lot of glitter stuff left over, and so we don't need to go ahead and just buy a whole bunch of stuff, and I think, since we're changing the model, and like I said, you know, I really was hoping that, uh, when we went to an online store, it really would have a better effect, but it didn't. It, it, uh, working with that company and having all the orders go ahead and, and be put through at the end of the month and having to wait two more weeks, it just wasn't feasible, and, and kids didn't want to wait six weeks for a t-shirt. And so I think working with the local company, not keeping stock, I don't have, I'm not spending any money, extra money, and all the money we do spend is on stuff that is selling, and if somebody wants a different size, then we order it, it's here two days later, and I don't have to stock, like, triple XL, you know, all that stuff, or extra small. So I think that's the exact kind of, uh, kind of avenue I'm taking with a lot of things, but, um, the kindergarten teachers, um, I know exactly what you're talking about, and that's why this past week, uh, I actually took all the, uh, GSRP teachers who do the, uh, do our pre-K program, we actually went for two hours, from 9:00 to 11:00, to Cyrene and, uh, Morris Elementary, and I had them in the classroom with the kindergarten teachers, talking to those teachers, watching the kids, and finding out, what do they need us to do to help better prepare our kids for them?
Excellent.
Yeah, and so, that's something that...
I did hear about that, that's great.
Yeah, so that's definitely something that we, I wanted to start right away, because that transition between pre-K and kindergarten hasn't been there, I agree, and now it's going to be. And so, the next time, we're gonna, I had half my staff go to each one, so the next time, hopefully in a couple weeks, we'll switch, and then we'll go to the other, um, elementary schools. And the goal this year is to get every one of my teachers in every kindergarten classroom talking about what we need to do, and we've already started that conversation about...
Excellent.
The teacher saying, "We just need the kids to learn to sit in a seat for a half hour." We need the kids to learn their, the sounds of their letters.
Yeah.
And so that's exactly what we're going to do, even though we're following the high school curriculum, part of the high school curriculum is transitioning into kindergarten, so we're gonna go ahead and incorporate those... and incorporate those things into our transition, so that it's a more smooth.
Excellent. Thanks, Dave.
Your passion is showing, Dave.
Very much so.
Thanks.
Very much so.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to comment to Ben, I think it's great that we're going local with our purchases and things. It's nice to keep it in our town.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, that's it for the superintendent's report. A little, little longer than normal.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board subcommittee reports. I realize we had two board subcommittee meetings today, but I'm going to give the chairs until next time to create their reports.
Thank you.
You're off the hook for now.
Well, mine's simple, if you want me to do mine.
Panic, don't want homework. He wants to get it done tonight.
I'll do the homework, too.
Would you like to give your report?
I mean, it's simple. We basically built insight, met right before this meeting, and we had a discussion with RC, who was recommended to us for Director of Transportation and Facilities. And so, we had a question to answer, interview, and discussion. It was nice. And number nine, we're going to make that decision.
Good job, Brian. Notes to follow, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Still got homework.
If it's computer work.
That was a good one. That was a good one.
I still have got Travis on.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number seven, informational items. We did not have any follow-up questions from our previous meeting, and we do have information in your packet about employment of non-certified staff. Any questions on that? Okay, going on to board discussion items. We have a list of historical board members.
Yeah, so I actually, we're going to let Joan kind of take this and run with it. So, Joan has been an incredibly loyal employee to the school district. She's worked for the district for over thirty years.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years. And she is, she's been around for a lot of school board members. And so, why don't you kind of explain what you put together for them?
I've just been keeping a little list since I've been here in nineteen eighty-five, and some of the past ones behind me and all the way through, your positions, whether you're president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, or trustee, and each year that you've been here, and when you resigned, and different things like that. So, that's basically a list.
So, you have quite a bit of information on these people. Yeah. So, this is, kind of gives you the history, if you ever hear of names, certain names, you know, these are board members dating back for the last thirty-plus years, so even into the seventies. So, it just thought would be kind of neat for you. Joan's been compiling it, you know, so, can look at that.
Thank you, Joan, for doing this. This is actually quite interesting.
That was interesting.
Really, really much.
Almost got back to you in high school, didn't it? Did they? No, seventy-nine, yeah, they did, didn't they?
Oh, seventy-nine, no.
Okay, we also have board meeting dates.
Yes, so, a couple of things on board meeting dates. So, number one, we need to deal with the November twenty-second meeting. My recommendation is going to be that we cancel that meeting. But we also do want to talk about board tours. I know that Joan's been communicating with you via email. So, we'd like to start our board tours here in November, but it is not necessary that every board member be present for every board tour. But obviously, we want to try and put them in dates that are convenient. So, Joan has put this list out. Do you need anything special from them tonight, Joan?
I think I've heard from about everybody except maybe Ken, when he's available.
Okay.
Just, I'll just, just plan them. Just plan them. Joan, just, if I get there, great. If I don't, don't, don't make me to stick them up.
Some of them have the reaching higher classes, but summer in the morning, maybe we could schedule the tours in the afternoon on those days.
Sure. So, then you'll be able to communicate out then, when those dates are.
Yes.
So...
Can you anticipate having a schedule of the buildings we'll be going to?
Yes. Yeah, once we get the dates locked down, I'll make sure I have an understanding of what buildings we'll be going to, and we'll actually post those.
Yeah, that's it.
Since we had an interview on a new transportation director, maybe it would be fun to have each of us ride a bus route one time.
There you go.
Yeah.
It could be fun.
Instead of a tour, just take that date and take a bus run.
With, with the kids?
Absolutely.
All right.
And sun asperger, I would say.
I, I drove one for three years in Florida. I'm good.
Well, we'll add that.
Probably could tell you some stuff about bus driving.
They'll be on their best behavior because we're on there.
But we don't have to all go together either. Each does a different run.
There you go.
And...
Okay. Good idea.
Okay. So, we canceled the twenty-second?
That's the, that's my recommendation. I don't know if you want to discuss that, or if anybody has...
Is there any objection to canceling the twenty-second?
No, not at all. Don't worry.
Are we going to cancel IRDU then?
What?
We don't need to. We could, we could do it at the beginning. That, that's up to you, Mr. Treasurer.
Is that the one I'm on?
Where's the, where's the board meeting?
You know what?
There's six.
Can you move it? Because I have to do it here at the day before.
Well, that's right.
Or we could trade.
The day's at seven.
We could trade.
Is it set for the twenty-second?
I'm not sure.
Are you in charge? I'm just kidding. I don't know when it is.
I am, but I didn't pay a lot of attention because I knew we were going to change it.
I know, I'm teasing. It's the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, it was the twenty-seventh.
Monday, Monday. Well, I'm okay with that. Sorry, I thought it was that Wednesday. Okay.
We'll leave it Monday.
Okay, so, hearing no objection, we have a plan to cancel the twenty-second.
Okay.
And the IRD meeting will stay the same, right?
Twenty-seventh.
With Stacy rotating.
Two P M.
All right.
Does that go with reaching IR, Lorraine? I don't have my calendar for that.
I do.
I'm sorry, you like that?
Okay. And going on to the evaluation and for our superintendent.
So, just, we had a discussion. I appreciate all of your attendance at the board training for superintendent evaluation. And we will commence with that evaluation at our December thirteenth board meeting, and we'll, we'll engage in my evaluation at that time. So, plan to move forward as, as we have. I'll probably update my self-assessment and add some documents to that, so you can see that when we, when we go into closed session on that day. So, does anybody have any questions or requests for me before that date?
If you can fire those out to us before the meeting would be good.
Okay.
So, we can check them out.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Other than that.
Okay, good. All right, we have one board action item this evening, and that is a motion for employment of our operations director.
Well, I am pleased to introduce today, Richard Hunt. Richard has been through a multi-step interview process. He is a person that is, got a lot of integrity. We talked to every reference that we could, including the ones he didn't list, and we talked to them about what they would say about his employment in this role. His employer, his current employer that I talked to today, he's been working in twenty-three years in the operations field at GM and multiple companies, said that RC is one of the most valuable employees he's ever hired, and he's really disappointed to lose him, but that he understands that he's got a great opportunity. So, I feel through the committee, we talked with a lot of scenario questions about how we budget, how we spend money, how we handle district equipment, all of the things that I think are sensitive to the board and sensitive to us. And I think that he handles himself very well. He, he's got a lot of integrity. And so, I'd like to put him forward as a recommendation to hire this evening, so...
The effective date?
The effective date, that's a good question. You have your, the...
What do you have?
Six of the effective date would be the twentieth of November.
Is it start date?
Yep.
So, I need a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Stacy and Brian, any comments or questions? Be it resolved, the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approved the employment of Richard Hunt, also known as RC, as the operations director effective November twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Keep charging.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have the opportunity for public comments. If you'd like to address the board, please stand, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Dave Splain, I'm here representing the Schwartz Creek Area Historical Society, and would like to just comment that through Mr. Menka and Mr. Thompson at the Mary Creek Building, we've been working on finding an archive storage place for our collection. Our donor of, of storage, Dr. James English, recently passed away. However, he had asked us to, after many, many years of his generosity in storing our collection, he had asked us to find someplace else because he wanted to do something else with his practice. And we were diligently looking into that, and for the past nearly a year now, we, it came to the conclusion that all the places that weren't going to work for us at the school would obviously be the best place for us, being the most historical building in the community. However, the last time we were at this meeting, the surprise was that you were going to discuss your facilities and the future of the facilities and such. And you know that going in, this may be a short-lived agreement for the purpose of our story. But we do thank you for the opportunity and generosity to give us a space for however long it may be. And we are working towards getting that completed and, and making that move happen as the family of Dr. English now has, has the task of deciding what happens to those properties and we want to get out of their way. So, just wanted to say that. And my wife is the assistant curator, Mr. Miller, Bill Miller, a descendant of the actual, actual Adam Miller of the Miller Settlement, which fell in Schwartz Creek. He's the curator, himself, he's the chief curator, she's the assistant. So, and I was just tasked with finding a location that would suit our needs. So, we do thank you for your consideration and allowing us to move into that spot. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it, bud. Anybody else? Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Go ahead.
Since we've hired RC, I would like Ben to correct him to attend our IRD meeting on the twenty-seventh, so that we can break them in right there.
Done deal.
That's internal audit.
That's an internal audit review team. Okay?
The internal audit review team.
Internal audit review team.
Also known as IRD.
We'll, we'll tell, we'll teach on the twenty-seventh.
He's like, "What?"
You'll be there.
I just would like to remind everyone, if you have something to vote on in your township or city, if you would please remember to vote tomorrow. Okay. All right, we now have need to go into closed session for purchase of, or lease of real property. Need a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mike, Brian, any comments or questions? Be it resolved, the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education go into closed session under eight D of the Open Meetings Act to consider the purchase or lease of real property. Joan, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, we will go into open or closed session at seven forty-five and take a five-minute break.
Joan, do you have something for me to write on? Yeah. You know what, I actually, no, you know what, I actually think I do have a piece of paper in here. Never mind.
Okay.
Okay.
So moved. Support.
Mike?
I'm giving you all the chances in the world tonight. Hurry up.
Tony? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Ben, thanks for...
We're closed, I want to...
Thanks, Dave.
We're staying closed, Sasha.
My pleasure.
Ben, what can we do to help you clean up?